Good evening, welcome. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Those joining us from home, welcome. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Cadalia? Mr. Sternan?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda this evening is a very special presentation, a life-saving award. Who will lead in that presentation? Chief Kiss Miller, okay.
Catch pins? All right. Good evening, Your Honor, and council members. I'm here tonight to present life-saving awards to Sergeant Rich Holland, Sergeant Jason Schamberger, Officer Raquel Wilson, and Investigator Nikki Houts. On August the 12th, eight-year-old Hattie Gansmeyer was helping her family pick up debris and sticks following the Dorochi storm, which occurred two days earlier. Family members were working on a large tree, which had uprooted and fell into the yard. Unbeknownst to them, Hattie had made her way under the hole created by the tree when it was uprooted. When the tree was cut, the remaining trunk and root ball sprang back upright, trapping her underneath. Family members tried to free her while another called 911. Officers arrived on the scene within minutes, and together with the family members, some nearby workers enlisted to help. They were able to pull the tree back far enough so Hattie could be pulled out from underneath it. Officers immediately began taking turns administering CPR, until the fire department arrived. She was transported to the hospital in critical condition, but she's made a miraculous recovery and is here with us today. This was a team effort between the officers, as well as fire department personnel, area ambulance, and additional officers who responded to the call. It's appropriate to honor the first officers on the scene for their quick actions. So, Hattie, you want to present one to each one? This is Nikki Houts. This is Raquel Wilson. Good job. Sergeant Rich Holland. You think I'd get these in order? Here you go, Rich. Can't reach my elbow across there, thank you. And Sergeant Jason Schamberger. Let's give him a round of applause. Want to go up there with him and get a picture? Here, push.
Well, it's absolutely fitting that we honor these individuals for their great work in saving the life of Hattie. We're all grateful to you. Hattie, we're so, so glad that you've recovered. We're all rooting for you. I was asking about you every day. If you ask Fire Chief, I was asking her all the time how you were doing, and praying for you and rooting for you and your recovery. So, we're so glad to see you here today. I have, there's a little gift from us here, a bunch of goodies from the city of Marion that you should get and enjoy.
Thank you all for joining us. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a winter lights update from Jill Ackerman, President of the Marion Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me be here tonight. Got quite an act to follow, wow. That doesn't bring perspective to life, I don't know what will. I'm here to talk about winter lights this afternoon. Winter Lights is a program that got started by Marion Leadership in Action, which is our year-long leadership program put on by the Chamber. And that's been going on for just over 10 years now. But in 2013, or in 2012, I should say, we started a class project that they had to implement every year. And we started with the banner program because we had the poles that were installed on Sixth Avenue, and they were all fitted with banner holders, and so we didn't have banners for those, so we started the banner program. And then, in 2013, we thought, let's kind of alternate this because we don't need to buy new banners every year. So, we started winter lights. And it was really just an effort to light up Marion a little bit more during the winter months when it gets dark so early, and to try to do something seasonal. So, this first picture is a picture of the banner enhancers that we bought. And when you look at them from the road, they don't look very big, but they're well over six feet tall, they're huge. And each one of those little enhancers cost us about $700 apiece. So, I'm going to try to put in perspective how expensive it is to do commercial-grade lighting for a community. But we thought that this year, especially, people really are going to need something visible that is going to bring us a little bit of joy, because it's just been a really tough year, especially for all of the Marion residents who've, everybody's suffered some kind of loss with the Dorachio storm. So, we think putting something visible in front of people could just cheer everybody up a little bit. But other projects that we've done under the winter lights have been, we lit the depot with the globe lights a couple of years ago. We bought the big metal tree that Cara Farmer did that goes up in the bus stop area. Those are just a couple of the projects that we've done. I'm going to show you some of the areas that we are considering. Maybe? Not working. There we go. Thanks, guys. So, this is one of the areas that we're considering. We think the bus stop area would be good. This is just kind of a project that we recently did with putting the umbrellas. This was the conceptual drawing, putting the umbrellas up in the bus stop area and the tables so that people could get outside and enjoy, still enjoy Marion establishments and outdoors during the pandemic. You can go to the next slide. So, this is now after it's been implemented. But basically, what we'd be looking to do is putting some kind of arch system from planter to planter. So, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you kind of what that might look like. So, we really liked this winter lights style because it spelled out the name of our program, which we thought was really cool. But when we floated it to some other people within the city, and then to some of our board members and just some community members, they thought that that looked a little bit too commercial. And so, we had the company that we're working for do a custom design. And basically, it would just be an arch with all of those snowflakes. So, white snowflakes has always been our theme. Because it is very seasonal, we can have them up really from November all the way through February. So, it just makes it easier on our public service department, that's who we partner with, and they always do the install for us. So, this particular arch is huge. It's like 45 feet wide, 25 feet tall. We are getting, we've secured a 25% discount through Temple Display. We had that set up. We were going to do a purchase in July, and then the storm ended up hitting, and we didn't get the purchase done. And so, they've extended the discount for us. But still, this structure is about $18,000. So, again, to give you some perspective, you could go to the next slide. This is another one that we would look to purchase. Again, this is something that could be either put in that bus stop area, strung from building to building. We have gotten permission for both building owners just to drill into their mortar joints and be able to do some kind of project, but also it could be staked and dug down into those planter boxes in the bus stop area. Or if you go to the next slide, we thought it could be easily hung on the front of the depot and could create some interest in the park also. Next slide. This would be another area where you could stake the big winter lights arch. The area in the left-hand side now is now void of trees. I was up there walking it with Seth earlier today, and that would be another area that we could try to do something in. Next slide. So, this is, these trees are an example of what we might try to do in the roundabout. So, that's another area that we're looking to try to do something in. They are equipped with electrical, we just have to do the electrical build-out, and then we'd have to purchase these trees. Personally, I like just the white trees, you can get them in all white. But we wanted to show you color option also, and just really get some feedback from the council. Next slide. So, here's the example of the white trees. Next slide. And then here's kind of the cost breakdown, and you can't really see this here. But normally, these trees come in way bigger sizes, but we asked them to do some custom pricing for us for six, eight, 10, 11, and 12-foot trees. The six-foot trees are about $1,000 apiece. And then, the 12-foot trees go up to about $1,800 apiece, just so you kind of know what range we're talking about. We would be, in one of our proposals that I'll talk about here in a minute, we'd be looking to do five trees in one of our designs and three trees in another design. So, you can move to the next slide. So, this is the design with three trees. And basically, and then you've got these kind of colorful balls. The colorful balls also come in white, they all light up. Those come in 20-inch, 30-inch, and 40-inch spheres, and they range from like $3 to $550 apiece. Next slide. And then this is an example of one with just a cluster of trees. So, these are roundabout examples. Next slide, these are actual pictures. Those are actual pictures of our roundabouts with the trees kind of superimposed on them. This is a really cool installation, this is a giant star. These can be made up to 20 feet in height. They start out at 11 feet. So, you'd really only need one big statement piece if you were going to do something like this. But the pricing here, they start at $14,000 for an 11-foot installation. They go up to $30,000, $29,815 for a 20-foot structure. Next slide. There it is on our roundabout. Next one. This is another example, so this is just a big 10-foot tall snowflake. And that runs about 8,500. Next slide. There it is on our roundabout, down by Zio Giannos. Next slide. And then here's kind of how we've laid out what our options are. So, in option one, we'd be looking to buy the large snowflake arch, the smaller snowflake swag, and then we'd do both roundabouts with five trees each. And that comes to about $37,000, $36,916. And the second option, we've got, again, the large snowflake arch, the small snowflake swag, three roundabout trees times two roundabouts, and then the seven lit spheres for each. And that proposal comes to about $34,500. And then the final option would be to do the large snowflake arch, the small snowflake swag, and then the large roundabout stars. We picked the 16-foot one, we think that would be the best scale. Two of those, and that proposal is about $72,000. So, kind of looking for, if you guys have questions? We have about, we have $10,000 raised in our foundation account for winter lights. And usually, the city council has had a line item in the budget every year for matching banners and winter lights. And we just, we haven't come and presented our project yet. And we were hoping that we could find a way to get some additional support to do something a little bit bigger this year. We've been kind of piecing this thing together for seven, eight years now, and it takes a long time to build a program. So, any questions?
Jill knows it. A lot of people know that, how important this is to me. I've always wanted our community to make more of a splash at the holidays with lights for the community. Over the last few years, I'm hearing more and more residents say, what's the deal with our holiday lighting? Why can't we do a little bit better? You know, I think we've raised people's expectations with everything else that we do in the city. And people do expect Marion to do everything, you know, reach higher and do better at everything. And to set the example, I know this is, it's very expensive, but people are starting to kind of wonder and ask, why can't we do something more for holiday lighting? We've never really budgeted for it, like in the Parks Department budget. And, but Jill knows, every year about this time, I kind of start bugging her, like, are we going to do more for lighting this year? What can the Chamber do? And how do we raise money? How do we get this? This year, it seems like, like Jill said, I completely agree with her. It seems like we've just, we've canceled everything, everything's been kind of an upside-down year. If there's any year where it'd be nice to just give people a reason to just put a smile on their face or cheer. You think about last year, when those Christmas trees were put in the storefronts. And how, I mean, you would have thought that, you know, this was Vegas or something. I was like, it was just, people thought that was just amazing.
Yep.
There was so much excitement created around the community from a few Christmas trees being put up in the Made Right Building storefronts and in the mall windows. And, you know, I think, when we saw the excitement that was created by the ones at Made Right, then we asked the mall owners if they would do the same thing, just to create more excitement, and they did. And so, of any year, this seems like so appropriate that if we wanted to do something to create some more cheer and give people a reason to smile, this seems like the year.
And I just think that people are, this is going to be something that people are really going to be doing this winter, is going out and looking at light displays, because we can't do Christmas in the park the way that we normally do it. We can't, you mentioned it, Mayor, that everything's been canceled. And I think people are going to jump in their cars and say, let's go look at lights. And so, we've got smaller communities surrounding us that do a much better job at winter lights than we do, and we're capable of a lot more, I know that we are. And the Chamber Foundation is committed to continuing to, you know, try to help help this along and help with the maintenance for sure. But we end up bringing about $8,000 to $10,000 to the table every year, and it's just not quite getting it done the way that we want it to. So, I think we're going to look to partner with Rotary, Marion East Cedar Rapids Rotary Group, too, to see if they could help us out with some funding and kind of take it on as a pet project. But I haven't vetted that with any of their leadership yet, so. But just so you know, that we'll be taking it to them. And anytime there's a grant opportunity, we'll seek that out. There's just not a lot of foundations and things like that that want to fund winter lighting, so.
Do you know what the average life is? I mean, because this is not a one-time expense.
That's right.
We're going to be able to use these over and over again.
So, we've had the banner enhancers, and that's the reason why you got to just buy commercial stuff. I know that it's sticker shock when you look at these prices. But, I mean, we've had those for seven years now, they've been up for seven winters, this will be the seventh. And so, they last a long time. I mean, I think we could get these to last 15 to 20 years. They're LEDs, so they're really inexpensive to run. We've got now to the point in the roundabouts where we've got the infrastructure to be able to do something like this. That's what's always been kind of the holdup, I think, in the park. There's always been a desire to do more there, but we don't have the electrical infrastructure. Especially since there's probably not going to be a lot of activity in the park this winter because they're closed. We'll be able to run some cords and get some things like that done. And we've got some volunteers that are, I think, ready to help us with that. The other nice thing about all of these pieces is you can move them around. So, like, if we decide we don't want to do trees, or snowflake, or a star, whatever, in the roundabout, we could move them to another park, or move them out to Lau, or, you know, create different-looking displays. So, that's the other nice, flexible thing.
Randy?
Go ahead. Yes, I would like to weigh in on this as well. First of all, thank you so much. Christmas is my favorite holiday as well, too, so I share that with the mayor. If you would just like some input, I really like these trees, and I really like these spheres. I guess I'm the type that the more lights, the more independent items, the better. I certainly appreciate these large stars and the snowflakes. Seems like a lot of money for one particular item, and if that item does fail, we have a lot invested in one item. But I really like these staggered heights trees, you know, whether you go with a 6, 9, and a 12, or throw a few of these, I like the white trees. And then the spheres, I like those as being colored as well, too. They resemble, obviously, the presence under a tree, so to speak. But I think those are really cool. Thank you for all the work that you've put into it. And again, that's just my two cents, but I like the fact that it gives you that flexibility to move them around. If we want to take them to other parks within the city, or if we want to use them for other events, using kind of those white lights, I totally agree with you, we can get extended seasons, they can go up earlier, they can come down later. I think they're really cool, so thank you very much. But I would be leaning towards something along those lines of quantity rather than the size.
Councilmember Atkins?
So, I too think, what a great idea. And I'm in the white camp as you are, right? I like the white lights. I might think a little differently than my partner over here. As you talked about longevity, right, and leaving them up from November through possibly February, which is wonderful, January and February are months that just are kind of yucky anyway, right? And thinking about the trees and the likelihood of actually leaving them up through February, right, as opposed to if we had a star or a snowflake that we could extend the use of.
Yeah.
So, no surprise, the star is the most expensive, which is what I like the most, the story of my life. So, I would say I'm certainly in support of the white lights. And if there's a way for us to extend the length of those lights being on in Uptown, that would be wonderful.
Very good, awesome, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brandt.
Yes, I'll... I do like the white also. I do like the trees and the roundabouts, I think that would be nice. I'm leery on the star and snowflakes and putting anything in the planters and the kind of plaza there, just because if that does get redone in the next couple of years, that could be obsolete, and I wouldn't want to spend the money on it now if it's not going to be used in the future.
We would definitely find a place for it. It's so big, it could actually go over Seventh Avenue, which could be really cool, like a gateway type of feature.
Sure, I did like the idea of the lights hung across from building to building. I've always thought that was great year-round.
Yep.
Not just for Christmas.
Yep.
The trees are really the only thing that I thought was, in the roundabouts, is really the only thing I think would be something I would be in favor of. I'd be hesitant to do anything just for the fact that we don't know exactly what's going to be up there. I know you say you could put it somewhere else, but...
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a specific ask for the council?
Yeah, I mean, we would be happy with any one of these options. So, basically, what I'm asking is, you guys pick the option that you like the best, and then I'm asking for, and not to exceed limit, knowing that we've got the first $10,000 of it, and then we'll need to make up the rest of that.
We need to find funding.
Yes.
I just wanted to understand that, so.
Yep.
Go ahead.
In general, I like the idea to accentuate our public areas during the late fall/winter/holiday period. I agree that I think the white LED is, gives us some longevity for their placement. I don't have any bias for trees or snowflakes. I think there are better people to decide those aesthetics than I. But I think what I want to dovetail to what's something the mayor said is, I think of this as a way to accentuate our recovery from two off-normal situations, the storm, as well as our pandemic conditions that businesses and citizens have had to endure. And so, I think this, if it just causes somebody to have a little smile when they're driving by, I think that ultimately will be a nice signal to the total community.
Thank you, Grant, and thank you for bringing up the businesses, too. Gosh, I should have, I'm the Chamber President, I should have been talking about that. But really, I mean, that's why you see department stores, you know, putting on the dog during the winter months, during the holiday season, because that drives sales, right? And so, if you can get more cars out looking at, hey, did you see what Marion did? Let's go over there, let's have dinner tonight, let's check out their lights, let's go hit a couple of shops. That just helps the cause, so thanks for mentioning that.
Steve?
Yeah, my final comment, again, I'm a little contrary to most people. I love color versus the white, but I usually get outvoted on that. And I completely understand that on a commercial basis, most people are right, are like, I mean, I love option number three. I mean, if we're talking, I love the idea, too, about going roundabout to roundabout.
Yeah.
To me, that's really defining what we've been working on for the last decade, and we're going to be working on for the next several years, and that's where a huge investment by the city is going. So, if you really want to reach higher, as the mayor challenges us, you know, I think we need a multi-year plan on how to light that up all the way between there
Yep.
over the next several years. I love the giant stars.
Yep.
I mean, I know it's a lot more expensive. But, you know, option number two would be the one I would pick out of one or two, because it gives you a variety at the roundabouts. But I love, I love the idea of the giant stars, I mean, that really sets them out, they can see that from a half-mile away. I think that'd be cool, but it's also the most expensive. So, and again, doing it this year, as everybody's talking about, is absolutely a fantastic idea, so.
Thank you.
So, how could we, how could we help here, Lon?
Why did I suspect that you were going to start looking?
Maybe not tonight.
Do you have options?
I talked to Lon about this, so he's not surprised.
Yeah, we wanted to gauge the city council's support on it and get some ideas from you on which direction you might want to head related to these. I would say that if there's council support for this, we can work together with the Chamber to develop a more refined project budget and bring that back for you. I would say that a couple of things that popped to mind, I can tell Zach, Ms. I can tell Zach must be watching the meeting because he's already pinging me on email with ideas for how many might be able to move something forward, so.
Thank you, Zach.
Hotel motel would be one because, as we said, we have canceled a lot of events this year, so there were a lot of potential contributions that we were going to make that won't take place, and we are still bringing in collections through the course of the calendar year for doing something a little bit larger. But barring that, I'm not hearing any opposition from any of the council members in attendance, so I would say that Jill and I would get together and come back with a project plan.
I will say that if we want to get this done for this season, we need to move quickly because these things take like eight weeks to get built. They're all custom, so we're going to need to get them ordered fast.
Okay. Councilmember Brandt?
Yeah, I would say there is a little bit of opposition over here, and I wouldn't be opposed to matching like we do every year. I'm, guess I'm not sold on spending thirty-six, thirty-four, seventy-two thousand dollars on it when there's other needs, I think, over some of the lights. I would encourage going forward that something gets done with the city budget so that we can have lights in the future and instead of trying to find something now and kind of scramble, make a big plan, incorporate it into what's going to happen on Seventh with the streetscape and what's happening on Eleventh and Tenth and everything, and what happens with the Plaza and what happens in the park with the depot and whatnot, trying to incorporate all that together instead of spending a little extra right now. So.
I don't think by any means this is the end-all, be-all plan. I mean, this isn't, yeah, very beginning. So.
I I guess if I had to choose, I would choose option two because it seems like you're getting the most for the, you're getting a lot of different things for the money. But again, you know, I think it's important to start somewhere. I think I respect what what Councilmember Brandt is saying. The, it seems like hotel motel funds is a is a perfectly appropriate use. And if there is extra money in there, it's not taken away from anything else. It's it's money that's hotel motel is designated for certain, certain types of uses. And if there's extra in there that has, isn't being used, then this is an appropriate way because it is going to attract people to the community. It does what what hotel motel funds are typically used for. As Lon mentioned, we've had a lot of cancellations on special events and money that's not being spent for special events. That you could view this as an alternate special event for the community. But one that is, it's an investment that's going to be used over and over again for multiple years. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if that makes a difference to you, but yeah, go ahead.
I understand what you're saying. There's that extra money potentially there, but that extra 20,000 could be put towards fixing the sidewalks in the Uptown. Or it could be fixing curbs that are beat up from other things, so I mean.
The intention of hotel motel money, though, right?
Respectfully, that's. Sidewalks in the Uptown. I mean, that could be used for from hotel motel. I mean, that's tourism and the sidewalks and lights in the Uptown, fixing the light poles, things like that.
Okay. Other, other thoughts or comments? Go ahead.
Just looking to the long term. I I think you said you had potential of some matching funding for this. And I think we should think about a longer-term plan if this is an initial start. And then how does this build out over time to have a continuing? If we budget for it on an annual basis, we we have matching funds that can be matched then by community contributions so that we can be a little bit more effective with this. I guess I I certainly respect Councilmember Brandt's concerns just about where does this fall into the priorities? But as I previously stated, I think that this, you know, the soft side of me says, gee, we want to do something that that gives some kind of at the heart level, some pleasing reaction into the community as we recover. So I'm, I'm I I think if if there's some way to allocate unutilized funds for this that Lon can find and recommend to us, that would be great. The only other question I have about this is there is some labor engagement with setting these things up, taking them down, and then subsequently making sure that they're secured for summertime storage and it may be hard to predict what what that cost would be year in and year out, but I would at least like a characterization of understanding what that might be.
I know that we've worked with public service on hand, on hanging the winter lights. So those are all of those banner enhancers and the banners too. So this would be more of like a, you know, the trees are pretty simple. They're kind of like a stake and then you, you've got a kind of a circular thing that the lights attach to into the ground. And you'd have to, of course, secure them somehow into the grass. The larger snowflake arch, that's got a basically a self-supporting bridge system that it's all built into it. It's all powder coated steel. And it does go straight into the ground. When I talked to the manufacturer, they said that some communities have built, they put footings in, but it's designed so you don't have to do that. So that would, and it comes with, all of these things come with all of the instructions and that type of thing. But in terms of like an hour's worth of like how many hours it's going to take to do it. When I was talking to Seth today, we were talking about doing the trees. He thought two guys would be able to handle it and probably over the course of
I guess I wasn't necessarily maybe I overstated it. I I don't think it's necessary, at least from my point of inquiry of the labor to put the install and take down and then secure them for storage. We don't need to engineer that in this setting, but I, at some point, whenever this comes to us for formal approval of utilization of funds, I'd like that to be characterized. So I don't want to, I didn't mean to put you on the spot about that.
I would want to add, though, as far as like storing and everything else, that's stuff that we would need to have conversations on. And if we're going back to to start planning some of these options, those are conversations we need to have. And there's stuff too that outside of this of conversations of what what we were going to do in City Square Park. As you notice, we've lost the majority of our trees within the square and the electrical there. So they're still planning to be involved to what we're doing within City Square for during the holiday time, too. We will look at trying to do, be doing something this year. But we'll have to explore what those opportunities are and with the timeline and kind of our work schedule here. And typically for City Square Park, as far as we typically assign two people and they'll spend about a month putting up those lights in City Square, putting up the insulation and stuff of that nature. Thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. So if 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 something is brought back to the next council meeting, is that timeline still okay? Or I don't know how that will work with your.
It's going to be tight. Yeah, I'll call them. I've got the guys are are rep cellphone number. I can call him and ask him, but I think, I mean, eight weeks from today is November fifteenth, so.
Okay.
Right. Thanks.
At this time, we have a public forum for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If anyone is joining us from home, this is a time when you can email your questions or asked to be allowed to speak through Zoom. Does anyone?
We don't have any one for this section. We have some for public hearings coming up, though.
Okay. We will just wait a minute to make sure no one is trying contacts us to speak. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Sternett?
Yes, Your Honor. At this time, I would like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F1 and including resolutions 28745 through 28756.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, resolutions 28745 through 28756. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. For the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Potem.
Mayor Potem, I move to approve the consent agenda with, agenda with Mayor Abou Osale's abstention from voting and discussion as follows. Items B1 through D2 encompassing resolutions 28757 through 28759.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osale's abstention. Items B1 through D2, resolutions 28757 through 28759. I think there's one item we do need some discussion on, and that'll be the first item under Public Services Resolution Number 28757. Ryan, if you can come up and cover that for us, thank you.
Your Honor and Council, this is a resolution approving a contact change order with Midstates Concrete. Essentially, we had this worded as a partial payment number three. What has happened, we went back, looked at the original contract. We're in the process of storing the precast materials at the manufacturer's plant right now. This is a change order. It's still within the budgetary scope of the precast package. However, it's not within the contract scope of what they signed a contract with. So essentially, in the original contract we had with them, we did not outline that we'd be storing the precast for this long. And so what we're essentially doing is doing a, doing a change order saying that this payment is just for storage only. And then, but it's still within the budgetary scope of the precast. Now, these costs, as the council is well aware, they're part of the public service facility. And these costs right here, we fully intend to subrogate against those that that essentially caused this.
Okay, so I think a key aspect, we want people that are listening in in the city council to understand that on the agenda on Tuesday, this was listed as approving a partial payment to Midstates for 131,400. It is not a partial payment. It is a change order to the contract.
Correct.
For 131,400.
Changing the scope, however, not changing the budgetary figure of the contract.
Right.
Yes.
All right, everybody understand that? Okay. So aside from that, are there any comments or questions under the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osale's abstention? Grant?
Yeah, Ryan, just on that, that same point, with with the Midstates Concrete storing these panels for us, that's going to better protect the structural integrity and the quality of those panels until we're ready for.
As of right now, it is, and I will tell the council that in the long run, no. Our next step in with working with Midstates Concrete is taking our structural engineer with us out to the site. There is concern that if these are not placed at the appropriate time, there will be some Boeing to them. So essentially, we do have to make an inspection on the precast as it sits right now and to see if they can be utilized in this project. Again, we fully intend to subrogate these costs. Right now, the panels that have been manufactured are taking well over 60% of Midstates site. That is hard for them to work around. And so these are the storage costs associated with picking up that storage site.
How long of a period of time does this change order cover for storage?
This will take us through September, I believe, or up to September.
To next September, this September?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so that just take, okay, so there may be another change order forthcoming?
That's, that's part of our inquiry. When we get there, as soon as we get some of this storm remediation under, under wraps, that's our full intent is to see what direction we're going to be going with the precast panels.
Okay, thank you. One more. Go ahead, Grant.
Last question. How long can these remain? I think horizontal and in storage before, before the deformation, potential deformation is too extreme for their future use?
And that's the, that's the trip we're going to take with our structural engineer to talk to the manufacturer. That's the intent of that trip is to get an answer to that. What I can say is the manufacturer has never stored panels this long. Probably not the answer you want, but that's the truth.
Just need to know. Thanks.
More, more information to come in the future on that one. Okay. Any other comments or questions on this consent agenda? Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou, Abou Osale's abstention. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion passes with one abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve, motion to remove the, from table, Resolution Number 28654, approving the Marion Strategic Plan for fiscal year 21 through 23. It was tabled on July 23 of 20.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to remove from the table Resolution Number 28654, approving the Marion Strategic Plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2023. Any discussion on the motion to remove from the table? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28654, approving the Marion Strategic Plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2023.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number 28654, approving the Marion Strategic Plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2023. Discussion? All those in favor of the, of Resolution Number 28654, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion supporting mayoral proclamation regarding public face mask advisory.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to support a mayoral proclamation regarding public face mask advisory. Discussion? So I will just state that I sought the council's opinions on on such a proclamation and what it should be. And I appreciate everyone's input. And from what I understand is that the majority of the, from our discussion on Tuesday, was that the majority of the council would support an advisory proclamation and not a mandatory action. Is that still, still, that's still the case? I mean, anything further to add to that? Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you, Your Honor. So as I just have thought about our discussion in the work session, this proclamation amplifies the importance of our residents and visitors to understand why the wearing of masks helps prevent the spread of the COVID virus and results in an increase of, promotes an increase of usage in in Marion. The other thing that it does is I think that it, it shows support for our Marion business owners to make the best decision for their businesses relative to mask usage and as a result for the protection of their employees and customers. And the last thing that I think is important is this is an initial step, as I recall our discussion, and we're going to be watching how the disease manifests itself go forward. And I think it's safe to say that we're reserving the right to revisit this at a future date, should conditions change, either for the better, hopefully, or for the worst, we don't hope for. should conditions change, either for the better, hopefully, or for the worst, we don't hope for. So those are kind of the key points that were in my mind as we talked about this last Tuesday. And I just wanted to be on record of what I was recalling as points of our discussion.
Okay, any additional comments or discussion? Okay, so again, I appreciate everyone's input. I intend to issue a proclamation that is advisory, as you've all recommended. I'm not precluding going a step further if, if, if things get to that point where it's warranted and actually mandating it. But for the time being, we'll go with the advisory proclamation. And we have been presented with a sample, an example, or a draft, a beginning draft. We'll be refining that and working with that to put in, put it in a final form, and then we'll share that with the council. Okay? All right, so if there's no further discussion, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Okay, for the next several items dealing with the Uptown Development, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Protem.
Okay, we now have a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. Will we have an update or present, short presentation on that?
Yes, Your Honor, so with this, as I briefed the council on Tuesday, anytime the city wants to contemplate using our urban renewal powers to provide any type of an economic incentive, that project must be specifically named in the urban renewal plan. So the first stage for the city to be able to provide assistance on a redevelopment proposal for the Marion Square Mall is to put the basic parameters of that project into our urban renewal plan. This seeks to do that after the public hearing, then the council would adopt a resolution approving the urban renewal plan amendment. And that gives us the statutory authority then to enter into a development agreement with the corporation planning to do the project.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have, we'll, so we'll hold the public hearing open for any comments for or against this proposed amendment to the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area? Do we have anybody waiting for this?
Yes, we have Nick Glue, who should be a panelist now. He just needs to unmute.
Okay, Nick?
Good evening, members of the council. For this item and for several in the future, I just wanted to, once again, come before you to, to state our, our organization's unanimous support for this project. I think as we talk about the action that you will consider in amending the urban renewal area, and then the following item with Mr. Catrelle and the development agreement, these are the projects that our community has been planning for, for the better part of the last decade. And I think we are just more than excited to see these begin to move forward. I think the timing of these projects are, are, are perfect as it relates to helping to drive our, not just long-term, but also, just like Christmas lights, I think, bring positive energy to a community. Seeing the type of investment that we'll begin to see through this project, that this urban renewal amendment will allow. Great timing as far as just, just positive energy, great private investment in this community. So I'll remain on here should anyone have any questions. And again, we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any other people waiting for or against the subject?
Yes, we also have Mark Catrelle.
Okay, Mark, go ahead, please.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Nick, council. I just wanted to say thank you. This is the fourth time I think I've had the opportunity to sit in front of you and get to know you a little bit. I certainly appreciate that. I wanted to just point out, there's two years' worth of work that's gotten us to here. And I couldn't be more pleased with the experience that we've had in working with Mayor, with Marion. Nick Glue and the Medco Board have been outstanding, the city internings on, and city manager Lon and, and the staff have been outstanding as well. So we're, you, you never know, two years ago, what things are going to be like when, you know, this day actually comes and we're really contemplating making progress and, you know, taking next steps. But we couldn't be more happy to be here and, and beginning to work with Marion and helping you guys rebuild. So we're very excited and we look forward to taking the next steps.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
That was all I had.
Okay, hearing no other comments on that, we will now close the public hearing. Now we'll move on to the resolution.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28760, approving the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28760, approving the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. Any comments or questions by the City Council? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28760, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28760 is approved with one abstention. Okay, we now have another public hearing on the proposed development agreement with Uptown Development LLC. So the public hearing is now open. So if we can have a short presentation on that.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this development agreement has a couple of different phases to it. One is that it authorizes the city to provide a couple of different economic development grants to the project. The first one would be a payment of $600,000. They would have to notify us a minimum of a week before closing so that we could get the check ready to go. And then we would write that one at closing. At the end of the project, then the city would make another contribution to make the total for that phase of the project, $3.35 million. And then there's a series of rebates over 20 years that are also contemplated to the developer. I would point out that when we did the fiscal analysis on it, even with the series of rebates over that 20 years, the city and the other taxing jurisdictions will realize a net benefit of $1 million in taxes that'll be received that wouldn't otherwise be received if the project was, if no project was to be contemplated. When we do these, we also do an examination that we call the "but for" test, which means that but for the city providing assistance, the project would not be able to proceed. That involves a fairly detailed analysis of the financing that they're proposing, the developer's capacity to do the project, and what the actual financial gap is. We've run through this through that and found that those expenses for a project of this scale were reasonable. Overall, it's a $26 million total investment, two different buildings in Uptown, a new mixed-use building that would front onto Seventh Avenue with retail and commercial space on the main floor, a potential second floor of commercial that would face over to City Square Park and then residential. On the south side of the site, facing towards Sixth Avenue, the second stage of the project would be the construction of a multi-story residential building. The first floor at ground level would take advantage of some of the topography and create some underground parking. It would actually be at street level for the Sixth Avenue side with residential above it.
So do we have anybody making any additional comments under this, excuse me? So we'll now open the public hearing for comments, either for or against the proposed development agreement with Uptown Development LLC. Do we have anybody else on the line with any comments?
I do not have anybody.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item, the resolution.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28761, approving development agreement with Uptown Development LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28761, approving the development agreement with Uptown Development LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Does anybody in the City Council have any questions or comments? This is certainly the key stage to really kick off this project and get it going for the development. Grant?
Yeah, Lon, could you just again recap, maybe with a little bit of additional color commentary about how at the end of the agreement period, we net an additional $1 million?
Sure, so with any type of an economic development agreement that uses tax increment financing, the city does not have the ability to rebate 100% of the new taxes. Most of the time, it's anywhere between 82 and 85%. So if you add $1 million worth of new value, about 15% of the taxes that are paid will still go to the taxing entities, the city, the school district, Kirkwood, anybody that has a debt service levy. In addition, there's a few other levies for the school that are exempt from being able to be captured and, and used as a TIP incentive. So that, that 15% on $14 million over 20 years is ultimately what will add up to that $1 million of income that the taxing entities will receive that we otherwise would not get. So that's where it's coming from. Then at the end of the 20 years, of course, when the incentive is complete, the taxing entities receive the entire distribution. I would also note that the project has a minimum assessed, assessment of $14 million between the two buildings. And the current assessment on the site taxable value is 1.6.
Thanks for that additional comment.
And I think one thing to keep in mind, if, if the success of this project is similar to what happened in Cedar Falls, not only do we see the investment coming through on that block, but you start seeing other investments and being made around it in other buildings in the Uptown area. So you start seeing that block certainly having the increased investment, but a lot of other people, other buildings getting improved and other buildings going up. So it kind of multiplies and you get a little domino effect. Any other comments or questions? Randy?
Steve, I'd like to add just one more to that as well, too, because I've been super excited about watching our corridor build out. And Lon alluded to one sector that obviously is very important, and that's obviously our school districts. So to be able to see these items come along, it's great for our community. We're great to collaborate with these developers. Great opportunities. We're starting to backfill some of the needs that we really have. But along the way, we're obviously building those bases that we've been needing for quite some time. So I'm super excited to see some new life being brought to some of these opportunities that we need. And this particular one, I'm going to call out the Marion School District. So I believe that's in their, their school district. So this is very exciting on a lot of different levels. So this, it just, the, the returns on this are over and over and over again. So just very excited. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28761. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28761 is approved with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28762, relating to the financing of a proposed project to be undertaken by the City of Marion, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28762. Do you have any other comments on this particular resolution, or has that been covered, Lon?
This resolution essentially preserves the city's ability to reimburse ourselves for that upfront payment out of any type of future economic development bond or loan that would be taken out against this project. So we'll have the ability to use our own cash to pay it, and we're just making sure that we have a mechanism to repay ourselves.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28762. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28762 is approved with one abstention.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28763, approving initial economic development grant payment to Uptown Holdings LLC in the amount of $600,000 for the Eagleview Partners LLC project located at 1117 Seventh Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28763, approving the initial economic development grant payment to Uptown Holding in the amount of $600,000 for Eagleview Partners LLC with the project located at 1117 Seventh Avenue. Can you just give us a comment on the necessity of that payment, please?
Yeah, this is part of the financial gap that's been identified on the project in order to be able to allow it to come to fruition. And this gives the city the ability, when they're getting close to closing, for us to go ahead and issue the check. As the council knows, you have to approve all payments that are made by the city on any of our charts of accounts. A lot of times, they're just contained either in with the listing of normal bills, or you'll see progress payments related to specific projects. So this queues us up so that when they get the rest of the ducks in a line and are able to have their closing date set, we're ready to go.
And this is all part of the development agreement we approved up in Resolution 28761?
Correct.
Okay, so this is just a step of part of that development agreement we've already discussed and approved. Any comments or questions on this resolution? Randy?
Do we, Lon, do we have an anticipated closing date on that at all?
I believe they're looking at October 18th.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28763. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28763 is approved with one abstention, and I will move the meeting back to the mayor.
Right, Mayor, at this time, I move to approve Resolution Number 28764, approving the agreement between Wendlin Coors Incorporated and the City of Marion for the disposal of vegetative debris.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table Resolution 287, I'm sorry, to approve Resolution Number 28764. And we've been asked by staff to table this to a, to a later date. So, does anybody have questions on, on that, on the tabling, or is anyone willing to make the motion to table for the request of staff?
I'll, I'll move to table that as well, Your Honor.
Second. Okay, so moved by Councilmember Sternad, seconded by Councilmember Brandt to table Resolution Number 28764. Discussion on tabling. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table Resolution Number 28764, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is tabled. Your Honor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 28765, approving contract with Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28765, approving the contract with Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services. Discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28765, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28766, approving addendum number one to the contract with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for storm debris removal services.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28766, approving addendum number one to the contract with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for storm, storm debris removal services. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 28766, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28767, accepting proposal from Myron Construction Company, Inc., regarding damage to the police station from the 2020 DeRachio Storm in the amount of $86,455.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28767, accepting the proposal from Myron Construction Company, Inc., regarding damage to the police station from the 2020 DeRachio Storm in the amount of $86,455. Discussion? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Sternad.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. As we're starting to deal with some of these items, Lon, I'm assuming these were fully recoverable through our insurance policy on these particular land items. Is that correct?
Yeah, anything less, the city's deductible, of course. But like in this case with Myron Construction, they were the company that But like in this case with Myron Construction, they were the company that originally built the police station, so they know the vendors that provided the panels and everything for it. So we just went back to them to get a quote for coming in to do the repairs and the replacement.
Okay, thank you.
But it's reimbursable through insurance, is what the question was?
Yeah, this is part of our claim through ICAP.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Brandt.
Yeah, real quick question about insurance, since you brought it up, and I'm not an insurance agent. You said minus, less the deductible, if there's damage to this building and the police station, is there deductible on each building? Is it separate claims?
Yes.
Alma's been handling that, so I can hear her chiming in behind me, but she's indicating yes, at least for the facilities.
For each individual building, there's a separate claim with the deductible.
Okay, other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number 28767, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 28768 approving purchase of replacement body armor with strikers in the amount of $43,516.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brandt, seconded by Councilmember Sternad to approve Resolution number 28768 approving the purchase of replacement body armor with strikers in the amount of $43,516. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number 28768, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 28769 accepting the designation of natural area. This will be Lot B Bridge Creek Third Edition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28769 accepting the designation of a natural area in Lot B Bridge Creek Third Edition. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number 28769, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2020 10th Street and Central Avenue, 10th Avenue intersection improvement projects encompassing Resolutions 28770 through 28772.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 10th Street, Central Avenue, 10th Avenue Intersection Improvements Project, including Resolutions numbers 28770 through 28772. Any questions? Okay, Mike, did you need to say something, or are you just answering questions? Okay, any questions for city engineer? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, just quickly, what project start, project conclusion dates that are at least preliminarily planned for?
So sealed bids will be received on October 20th of 2020, and then we will have an award November 5th. Work shall begin earlier and no later than June 21st, basically meaning they need to start the 21st of '21 and be completed within 35 working days with liquidated damages in the amount of $1,500 per day, because we will close this intersection in order to build the project.
And just to clarify, did I hear that that intersection will be completely closed during construction?
That is correct.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 10th Street, Central Avenue, 10th Avenue Intersection Improvements Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive, file, and discuss letter regarding no parking on South 14th Street from Marion Independent School District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and discuss the letter regarding the no parking on South 14th Street from the Marion Independent School District. Okay. Discussion on the motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file, discuss, and concur with the TAC report regarding school speed zone on 35th Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, discuss, and concur with the TAC report, Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding school speed zone on 35th Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-11 amending Chapter 63 of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on 35th Avenue as 35 miles per hour from 35th Street to Highway 13, except that area from Learning Lane to 600 feet west of 44th Street, which shall be 25 miles per hour when children present. Remove Code Section 5AB, initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 20-11 amending Chapter 63 of the Code of Ordinances to establish the speed limit on 35th Avenue as 35 miles an hour from 35th Street to Highway 13, except for the area from Learning Lane to 600 feet west of 44th Street, which should be, which will be 25 miles per hour when children are present. Discussion on that.
Your Honor, I just would mention that the school district would not mind if you skipped a few of the readings, but that's completely up to council, whether you do three separate readings or if you combine them.
Okay. So does that come after the vote? Yeah. Okay. Any discussion on the vote for the initial consideration? Go ahead.
Just a question on that. Do you have to do a second read and then a final read, or can you just skip right to the final read? The final consideration, or final, yes, consideration?
I would say that you need to do a, you first do a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the second reading. Do that roll call vote, requires a super majority. Then if that passes, then you can make another motion to proceed to the third, to suspend the rules and proceed to the third.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the initial consideration of ordinance number 20-11. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 20-11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance number 20-11 for the second consideration. Don't have to read it all. Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and approve the second consideration of ordinance number 20-11. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance, I'm sorry, this is?
Roll call?
Roll call. Okay, so? Okay, so, I get it. We have a motion to suspend the rules so that we can vote on the second consideration. Okay. So if there's no discussion on, or is there discussion on suspending the rules? I mean, I know there's a reason for having three readings, but in this instance, I don't know that anybody's going to complain about establishing a school speed zone. So, okay. If there's no discussion, we'll vote on suspending the rules, and that's a roll call vote? Would you please do the roll call vote?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins? Yes. Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abouasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternad?
Yes.
Motion's? Motion's approved. So now the rules are suspended, and then we need a motion, or do we vote?
No, to vote on the second consideration.
Okay, so we will vote on the second consideration. All those in favor of the second consideration, approving the second consideration of ordinance number 20-11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance number 20-11 for final consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to move the final consideration of ordinance number 20-11. Any discussion on suspending the rules? May we have the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Atkins? Yes. Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abouasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternad?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. We'll now vote on the final consideration of ordinance number 20-11. Any discussion before we vote? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I would like to ask just for the record, one last time before the final vote, has there any been, has there been any comments or any information submitted?
The only thing that's been received is actually from the police department, from some of the flaggers out there that would like to have this enacted as soon as possible now that school is in session.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance number 20-11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion is approved. Councilmembers Sternad.
Yes, Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to move to approve Resolution number 28773 approving the contract with Anderson Bogart regarding the 2020 Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road intersection improvement in the amount of $65,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28773 approving a contract with Anderson Bogart regarding 2020 Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road intersection improvement project in the amount of $65,000. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution number 28773, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. I'll turn over the next item to Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number 28774 approving memorandum of agreement with Quickstar regarding traffic signals at intersection of Highway 151 and 62nd Street. This is QuickTrip number 589 in the 900 block of 262nd Street.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number 28774 approving the memorandum of agreement with Quickstar regarding the traffic lights out at the intersection of Highway 151 and 62nd Street. Could you, I was not here Tuesday, and you might have talked about this, what percentage of the traffic lights is Quickstar paying for under this MOA?
100%.
I thought that was the case, so I thought we wanted to make sure that's on record. So, and the intersection is already under improvement out there. Okay, so any questions or comments on this resolution? Okay. All in favor of approving Resolution number 28774, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28774 is approved with one abstention. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 28775 setting a public hearing for October 8, 2020 regarding a preliminary site development plan for SNS storage located south of North Gateway Drive and west of Partners Ave.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28775 setting the public hearing for October 8, 2020 on the preliminary site development plan for SNS storage located south of North Gateway Drive and west of Partners Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 28775, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 28776 setting a public hearing for October 8, 2020 regarding a preliminary site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility on property located at 3600 Highway 151 brought by Hy-Vee, Inc.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28776 setting the public hearing October 8, 2020 on the preliminary site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility at property located 3600 Highway 151. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution number 28776, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 28777 approving Winslow Addition Preliminary Platte located south of Tower Terrace Road and west of Winslow Road, Marion, Iowa. Donna M. Morrissey, Revocable Trust.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28777 approving Winslow Addition Preliminary Platte located south of Tower Terrace Road and west of Winslow Road. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number 28777, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 28778 approving the Marion Public Library Central Corridor Review located at 1101 Sixth Avenue, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28778 approving the Marion Public Library Central Corridor Review for the property located at 1101 Sixth Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 28778, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 28779 approving Freylinger Addition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for property located at 2692 East Robbins Road, Marion, Lynn County, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28779 approving Freylinger Addition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for the property at 2692 East Robbins Road. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 28779, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion directing staff to name the frontage road located south of Highway 151 and west of 62nd Street to Beale Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to name the frontage road south of Highway 151 and west of 62nd Street as Beale Street. Discussion? Motion's approved. I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar for the concrete foundations associated with the Marion Library Building Project as follows. This will include Resolution numbers 2878, excuse me, 28780 to 28782.
Second.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Harper to approve the project calendar for the concrete foundations for the Marion Library Building Project, including Resolutions 28780 through 28782. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the concrete foundations for the public library project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the concrete foundations associated with the Marion Public Library Project. Should that have been before this, the public hearing, should that have been? No, okay, fine, all right. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening, your honor and council. Holly Trinari, Library Director, I'd like to introduce Jared Engler from Bush and Construction as well as Bill Bruce. Jared is the, our, has been our main contact with Bush Construction throughout the project. Bill Bruce will be our project manager once the project kicks off here and will start taking over as our contact here on the site. So I'm gonna turn all of this over to Jared to kind of walk you through each one of these as we go through the process. Just gonna do concrete.
Okay. All right, thank you. So the first bid package that we have out here is concrete foundations and we received five bids on this one. So Knutson Construction, Portson Construction, Woodruff Construction, Tribber Construction, and Climen Construction. And you can see with base bid plus alternates, we're looking at Knutson Construction at eight thirty five, one twenty six is our apparent low bidder.
Okay. If you can just stand by until we get to the motion and see if there's any questions. At this time, are there any comments from members of the public either in favor or in opposition of this measure? Do we have any?
I have not received any.
Okay. We will hold the public hearing open for just a minute to see if anyone joining us electronically is going to reach out with a comment. Have we received any comments outside of the meeting? Okay. Anyone?
I do not have anybody.
Communicating, okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight seven eight three accepting bids and awarding the contract to Knutson Construction for the concrete foundations associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of eight hundred thirty five thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight seven eight three accepting bids and awarding the contract to Knutson Construction for the concrete foundations associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of eight hundred thirty five thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars. Discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing I'd like you to do as you go through each of these sections, we're talking about the library and the bids that are out there. Can, do you have the amount that, ready that tells us what the preliminary estimate amount was?
Yes.
I just handed that out to you, Councilman Jensen. You should see that on each one of those.
Very last, yeah, very last page. So, bid package zero three A, our overall budget for that bid package was eight hundred and thirty five thousand eight hundred. So we're under budget by six hundred and seventy four dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. Okay, that'll answer the question for the remaining sections.
Betcha.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any questions or comments on this, on the resolution?
Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor of approving, approving resolution number two eight seven eight three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar for the site concrete associated with the Marion Library Building Project as follows. This will be resolutions two eight seven eight four through two eight seven eight six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the site concrete associated with the Marion Library Building Project including resolutions two eight seven eight four through two eight seven eight six. Discussion or, yes, discussion?
Okay, in this particular bid package, zero three B, we received two bids. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
We'll wait for the public hearing to.
Okay.
No problem. Any discussion on the motion of approving the project calendar? All those in favor of the motion to approve the project calendar for the site concrete for the Marion Library Project, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the site concrete associated with the Marion Library Building Project. The public hearing is open. You're welcome to proceed. No, no problem.
Okay, in this particular bid package, zero three B site concrete, we received two bids, the first one being Central States Concrete and the second bid from Tribber Construction. And we're, Central States Concrete for three hundred and ninety eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars is our apparent low bidder recommending award on that.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open for comments from the public. Anyone joining us electronically, this is the time to send in your comments or ask to speak. We'll hold it open for, for a minute and ask the staff if we received any comments outside, outside the meeting?
No, sir.
No comments outside the meeting? Anyone contacting us?
No, I have no comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight seven eight seven accepting bids and awarding the contract to Central States Concrete for the site concrete associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of three hundred and ninety eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight seven eight seven accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Central States Concrete for the site concrete for the Marion Library Project in the amount of three hundred and ninety eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Discussion on the motion? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Just a quick clarification, I'm assuming since we did the foundation concrete before, this will include the parking lot sidewalks, all the flat work?
Yes, sir. Everything outside of the building.
Everything outside of the building. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight seven eight seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve the project calendar for the unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Building Project including resolutions two eight seven eight eight through two eight seven nine zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve project calendar for the unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Project including resolutions two eight seven eight eight through two eight seven nine zero. Discussion on the project calendar? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the unit masonry for the Marion Public Library Project. Public hearing is now open. Please proceed.
All right, in bid package zero four A, we received four bids, Seehoss Masonry, B&amp;B Masonry, Steve Moyle Masonry, and Seedorf Masonry. Our low bid of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to Seehoss Masonry is who we're recommending award to.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open for comments from the public. Anyone joining us electronically can send in their comments either in favor or against this measure at this time or asked to be allowed to speak. While we're waiting, we'll ask the staff if anyone has received any comments outside the meeting?
No, sir, not that we're aware of.
None, okay.
I haven't received any comments.
No comments. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight seven nine one accepting bids and awarding the contract to Seehaste Masonry for the unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight seven nine one accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Seehoss Masonry for the unit, unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution two eight seven nine one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the project calendar for the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Building Projects as follows, resolutions two eight seven nine two through two eight seven nine four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Building Project including resolutions two eight seven nine two through two eight seven nine four. Discussion on the project calendar? All those in favor of approving the project calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Building Project. The public hearing is now open.
So this was for zero five A, this was a steel fabrication and erection bid package. This was our largest amount of bidders of all of our packages with a total of nine, Peak Construction, Climen Construction, Camelot Metals, Cedar Valley Steel, Central Western Fabricators, TSF Structures, Blantner Steel, Tri-City Iron Works, and White's Construction. This package had an alternate as well, so we took base bid plus alternate. It also had a unit price that, that will be noted in their contract. So a total bid of seven hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred dollars to Peak Construction that we're recommending award.
Okay, the, the public hearing is now open for members of the public to register their comments either in favor or in opposition this measure. Comments can be sent in at this time. And while we're waiting, we'll ask the staff again if there have been any comments received outside the meeting.
No, sir.
Okay, please note for the record that no comments were received outside the meeting. We received any comments?
I have not.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight seven nine five accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Peak Construction for the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of seven hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution numbers two eight seven nine five accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Peak Construction for the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of seven hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred dollars. Discussion? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Just a general question, so you, you referred to an alternate one bid and there's a couple others later on that have alternate bids. So what is your definition of an alternate bid when you take a look at this? Is it part of the scope of the contract upfront or is it something that may be added later if there are dollars available?
In this particular one, there, these are alternates that are identified during the bidding process. So they're noted in the bid documents and then they'll be analyzed at that time. So most likely, they could be something that if, if the project dollars, let's say were over budget at a, at a later date, we could look at it at that point in time and decide if it's, it's something we're gonna put into the project or not. In this particular point, this is for the south facade canopy, the, the one I'm referencing here, so that'll most likely get added to the project, so.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight seven nine five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar for the ground improvements associated with the Marion Library Building Project encompassing resolutions two eight seven nine six through two eight seven nine eight.
Second.
It has been moved by councilmember Harper, seconded by councilmember Brandt to approve the motion to approve, to approve the project calendar for the grounds improvements associated with the Marion Library Project. It includes resolution two eight seven nine six through two eight seven nine eight. Discussion on the project calendar? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the ground improvements associated with the Marion Public Building Project. Public hearing is now open. Please go ahead.
All right, for bid package thirty one A, ground improvements, we had three bids received, Hila Tech, Subsurface Constructors, and Peterson Contractors. We're recommending Hila Tech for a total bid of eighty five thousand five hundred.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open for comments from members of the public either in, in favor or in opposition of this measure. We will accept those comments at this time if anyone joining us electronically would like to make a comment. While we're waiting, we'll ask the staff again if any comments have been received outside the meeting?
No, sir.
Done, okay, please note that for the public record.
I haven't received any comments.
Okay, no comments have been received. We will close the public hearing and proceed toward, to, to the resolution. Councilmember Atkins?
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight seven nine nine accepting bids and awarding the contract to Hila Tech for the ground improvements associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of eighty five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight seven nine nine accepting bids and awarding the contract to Hila Tech for the ground improvements associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of eighty five thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion? Yes, Steve?
Just a clarification, what does ground improvements encompass?
So the soil conditions at the, at the library building proper, we've got some areas that may not be suitable to support the load of the new, of the new library. So what Hila Tech would actually come in and do is actually drive rock into the ground to. Geopiers? Yep, to create a, a better soil condition to support the building. Yep.
Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, question, do we have any sense as to the groundwater condition that exists on the site at this point and is there any remediation that's gonna have to be done? Or is this, that remediation?
Yeah, so I know they've done.
Oh, sir, could you please speak in the microphone? Thank you.
So I know they've done a geotech report, and that's why we end up going with the aggregate peers here to do that. That's the little condition.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 28799, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion has been approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar for the site grading and utilities associated with the Marion Library Building Project as follows. This will include Resolution numbers 28800 through 28802.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the site grading and utilities associated with the Marion Library Building Project, including Resolutions 28800 through 28802. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we will open a public hearing regarding the site grading and utilities associated with the Marion Library Building Project. The public hearing is now open.
All right, in the 32A site grading and utilities, we received four bids. Boomerang Construction, Roth G Construction, Pierce Tobin Construction, and Adobe Construction. And we're recommending Boomerang Construction for a total bid of $444,702.
Okay, the public hearing is currently open for members of the public to address the council, either in opposition or in favor of this measure. People joining us from home can send in their comments at this time. While we're waiting, we'll ask if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
We've had a lot of questions and inquiry regarding this particular bid package, Your Honor, so I would imagine that there might be someone who might speak, ask to speak on this topic.
Do we have anyone calling in or emailing us?
I haven't received any.
None. Any other comments received outside the meeting by staff?
No, sir.
No public comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. This is turn now.
Do we want to amend this through that, or?
I think you can just.
Okay, so Mayor, at this time, I move to approve amended Resolution number 28804, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Boomerang Corporation for the site grading for utilities associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of $444,702.
Second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 28804, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Boomerang Construction. Or to Boomerang for the site grading for utilities associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of $444,702. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution number 28804, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar for the landscaping and site restoration associated with the Marion Library Building Project as follows, encompassing Resolutions 28805 through 28807.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the landscaping and site restoration associated with the Marion Library Project, including Resolutions 28805 through 28807. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the project calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we will open a public hearing on the landscaping and site restoration associated with the Marion Library Building Project. Public hearing is now open.
All right, this is our last bid package, 32B. Three bidders on this one, so Culver's Lawn and Landscape, Nolan's Lawn and Landscape, and Alpha Landscapes of Iowa. We're recommending Culver's Lawn and Landscape for a total bid of $168,208.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open for members of the public to address the council, either in opposition or in favor of this measure. While we're waiting, we'll ask the staff if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
No, sir.
Okay, note that for the record. Have you received anything? Any comments?
I have not.
Okay.
There's an error in this way this is listed. Yeah. Your Honor, I'd just like to note a typo in the slide. The Nolan's Lawn and Landscape bid was $217,800.
Yeah.
It should be correct on the handout that you have in front of you. It's just a typo on this particular slide.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out.
Culver still remains the low bid, so again, Nolan's Lawn and Landscape was $217,800.
Including the alternate?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay. So seeing that we have no comments coming in, we'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 28808, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Culver's Lawn and Landscape for the landscaping and site restoration associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of $168,208.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28808, accepting the bids and awarding to the contract to Culver's Lawn and Landscaping for the landscaping and site restoration work associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of $168,208. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 28808, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 28809, approving the purchase of 30 computers from Marco in the amount of $29,500.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 28809, approving a purchase of 30 computers from Marco in the amount of $29,500. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 28809, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a storm update.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's been a busy couple of weeks for us since the last city council meeting. As of today, I think Public Services is estimating that we're about 85% complete with the initial pass of debris removal. If things hold out the way that we hope over the next week or so, starting about midweek or towards the end of next week, we can actually start to pick up some of the construction and demolition debris that's been sitting out there and then start moving through the community for the second pass on the debris removal. We've had aerial trucks active, working with the park staff to remove hangers off of the trees in the right of way and have started doing some work in the parks themselves. Tomorrow, we have the next critical step for us in the response, which is our initial consultation call with FEMA for what they call the scope, the project scoping discussion. The first one will be only around 15 minutes, and we'll set up the next one, which is expected to be an hour or so. But the scoping discussion, what this will do is kick in a 60-day period for us to let them know everything that we intend to file for a claim through FEMA. So all of the work that we've been doing up until now for the damage assessment, all the data we've been collecting, this is when we start to really provide that to FEMA. If it's not included in the scoping discussion, as soon as the 60 days is done, we are no longer eligible to ask for it. So we've been referring to it internally as kind of the kitchen sink moment for the project that anything that we think we could potentially be claiming on. So for example, if we have something that ends up in excess of our insurance limits, we want to make sure that that's going to be included with this part of the project. So very active on the recovery phase. Again, I would just reiterate for everybody out there in the public, just be patient with us. If you haven't traveled the community to understand the full scope of what we're dealing with, there is an awful lot out there. The piece that was tabled earlier tonight for the contract with Wendling Quarries, that's what we're anticipating the ultimate disposal site for this stuff will be. But at the request of the state, we're going to wait and publish that over the weekend, and then we'll be able to move forward with that contract. But in essence, what we're going to do is we're going to take advantage of a dry quarry and take all of our material out there, have it hauled out there, and then it'll be capped and covered. It's a great project to remediate an old quarry that otherwise doesn't have much of a use, and it will eventually turn into soil, so it will make the area fertile again. Are there any specific questions anybody has related to this?
Questions for city manager? Yes, Grant?
So just to clarify, there's a 60-day window that we have to then declare our recovery scope for FEMA?
Correct.
Do you have any sense of potentially how far through the process of scope determination we currently are, or is that still to commence?
I think we've got most of the damage assessment done. The next stage for us is really to start attaching numbers to it. So in consultation with our state rep, who's been advising us through this process, there, for example, it's not really clear in the instructions, but if you're submitting a site, he said to make sure not only in addition to the photos, they're going to want to know the dimensions of the site. So if we had a park, they're going to want to know how many acres, dimensions of buildings, things like that. So that's the next stage for us for the damage assessment. For the city facilities, we've got a pretty good assessment of the damage for our insurance claims to know what happened there. But there will be some things that we'll be noticing over the next several weeks that frankly has been concealed. They were clear that any damage to public facilities is eligible for potential reimbursement. So for example, if a tree fell down and broke a street, and we can verify that the falling of the tree is what broke the street, we can submit that. So that's kind of the next scope for us to make sure that we've got a full assessment of all of those. And just before I close, one thing I did want to say is that just I can't say again how proud I am and how happy I am with the response that the staff has done to this and has the effort that they have put in throughout this. I know we put a lot of focus on emergency services and the public services personnel and the parks personnel, but the administrative staff, the library staff have just been outstanding through all of this. And we're scattered to facilities far and wide in places that were not used or still operating. People have been pressed into service to do things that are decidedly in the other duties assigned portion of their job descriptions, and they've all performed in an exemplary manner.
There's no question that every single team member has pulled together and we have shown everyone how it should be done, and I'm just really proud of all of you, the entire staff. You make us all look good, and our city is very happy for the most part. I mean, there are residents who are starting to get a little bit impatient, which is understandable. But for the most part, people are very appreciative. They realize and understand the magnitude of this disaster and what we had to deal with, and that we're this far along in the fifth week of cleanup is really amazing and do entirely to all of you, the staff, who have really pulled together and made this happen. So thank you, everybody, for all you're doing, you're continuing to do, and hopefully we'll get full reimbursement from FEMA. What's the deadline, Lon, for individual assistance? Do we know that?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
We might find out.
I believe it's 30 days from the disaster declaration, but we'd have to verify that.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to hold this to the end, but I as well too, Lon, want to echo the appreciation for the staff and the city. And in the insurance world, I refer to this timeline that we're in as the widow's period. And what I mean by that is the spotlight is going to start moving away now. And the sense of urgency has passed. You'll start to see a lot of things where people will start to pull back, but yet we are going to continue to keep working through these. And I think the community needs to know that, that we're continuing to keep eyes and the spotlight on the areas of the city that we need to. We will continue to keep working through these things. Insurance companies are continuing to work with households, business owners. That is not going away, so I think that's important for the community because they feel as though time goes by, the sense of urgency seems to start to slip away, and the talk about it seems to start getting a little bit more in the background noise. So I'd just like to pass that along to people who know that we're still continuing to keep working as we will. This will be something that we go into the new year with, and we'll still be dealing with that. So again, thank you to the staff and everyone, an incredible time.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. For the city, it might feel to a lot of folks, if you've got your cleanup done, or your roof is done, or siding is repaired, that this is over. We are absolutely on the city side, still in disaster mode as far as moving through the recovery piece, and will be for several months.
And I think that's something that the entire council can help to convey to the community, is that we are still in disaster mode, and we are still working frantically to make sure that everything's taken care of and that we're recovering. And the initial estimates, you know, in that first week, we were going to be dealing with cleanup for a year or so, from what I remember. And the fact that we're this far along in the fifth week of cleanup, I think it's just, it's amazing. And it's not just about cleanup, there's so many other things that the staff is doing, dealing with FEMA, dealing with lots of different issues. And so again, thank you for the leadership that's coming from the leadership team, all the way to every single team member and city employee for pulling together and seeing our city through this. Go ahead.
I think one aspect, and again, I think the amount of work already done in the city of Marion has been incredible. I keep kind of keeping track of our percentage compared to Cedar Rapids. I'm really proud to see that we are, you know, much further ahead. I think we have a higher percentage of trucks per capita. But I think as we go forward, maybe come up with a list of, here's the items as a city we still have to contend with in the next several months. In other words, these southern recovery trucks are going to be here for another, you know, eight weeks. We've got all these signs, street signs and everything that are bent and on the ground, and street lights, et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, there's a list, a litany of list of items that still need to be repaired and fixed, and those are still going to take a period of time. I don't know what that period of time is, but as you drive around the city, there's still a lot of stuff to be done. And I agree with everybody else, everybody's starting to get a little, like Randy says, everybody's starting to get a little calmer about it, and it's like, wow, that's already a month ago or five weeks ago. It seems like such a long time ago. But there's still a lot of work to be done, and I think we need to somehow also keep that in front of our citizens so that they know, you know, we're not stopping, there's still a lot of work to be done. The city is still working very hard to continue to get the city back in the shape.
And once we have the project scoping done, that will be the complete picture of everything that we could anticipate having to deal with arising out of the event.
Good. And Amber, through communications, has been putting out, putting out the project And Amber, through communications, has been putting out the progress reports and keeping people informed on where we are and what we're doing. So, okay, Grant, you had a question?
Yeah, I do. This is really more just because back in my professional life, I spent seven years working very closely with FEMA on various matters, and I can understand, I have great empathy for the detail of information that they are requesting of us. And I guess I just want to say from my personal perspective and experience, please do not be shy, shy, shy to come to council and say you need additional resources to meet their compliance profile and actions that they're, they have to satisfy for their regulatory basis. So please keep that in mind. From my perspective, I have a sense of what that might be, and it's not easy.
One of the things that we are working on is an RFP, to have a specialist come on for us in a contract basis, just to handle the processing of the paperwork, make sure that we're not missing any deadlines, and just really coordinate everything that's going to be required for this. In past disasters, those are things that we've been able to handle more internally, but this is an orders of magnitude larger event than Marion's has seen.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Lon. This time we have a public forum where we take comments from members of the public on any item that is not on the agenda. We received any comments?
I have not received any.
We'll hold for just a minute to give people a chance if they are trying to reach We'll proceed to counsel comments, and if any comments from the public come in during this time, just go ahead and let us know, okay? We'll start with Steve. Anything? Ready?
I just wanted to congratulate Holly, your team, the board, everyone involved, coming in with a deficit on these numbers is, excuse me, not a deficit, but a coming in under budget phenomenal on this phase. Keep up the good work, and hopefully we can continue to keep following the same pattern on that, so that's very exciting. It's obviously a sign of all the hard work that goes along with that. So, Tom, I wanted to ask you, do we have any family members of the Beal family in which that street has been named now for? Do we have any connection with the individuals, or do they even know that this happened? No? Okay. Okay. It's always kind of fun, and hey, you know what, Marion's got its own Beal Street now, so anybody who's familiar with Memphis, Tennessee, you know, maybe we see some barbecue shops setting up over there, so, although the spelling is a little bit different, but it's exciting.
I just wanted to point out that the motion was Beal, for Beal Street. It's actually Beal Court because it's a dead-end street. So anyway, in the staff report, it was Court, and the motion was Street. So when it comes back, if it's just a motion directing, it'll probably Beal Court.
Very good. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We'll see. You guys can change. Most streets are hard.
I remembered that when you said it. I thought, thank you, that's all you're having to say. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so just, I'll echo the library, super excited to get the project moving forward, so can't wait to continue to watch this progress, so good work so far. Secondly, just, you know, really encouraging folks, I know we have a mask, I think advisory is what we called it, and really encouraging our folks in the community to mask up. It's really protecting others, and this virus has a lot of folks that are asymptomatic. So you might not know that you're carrying the virus, so it's really important to take it serious, to encourage folks to, if you're not wearing a mask, to consider to wear a mask. And then lastly, maybe on a lighter note, but maybe not for some of us in the community, five weeks with no internet still at the Atkins House, so I feel the pain of some of our other residents in the community that may not have internet. There's, football has not been watched at the Atkins House, which is okay by this person, but my partner in crime, not so much, so there we have it.
I would continue with the library talk. I think everyone has a little cup on their table or desk or whatnot tonight, it says Crafting Community, Marion Public Library in Uptown Snugg. They're partnering up for a series, I guess, of movies in the art way on the stage, and tonight is the kickoff for that. So in, I think, 14 minutes, the first movie, no, Remembering the Titans, thank you, talking about football, is playing this evening, and then at the Snugg, you can take these, get these little cups and get a little special Doratio drink, apparently, so just a little plug for that. So if anyone has nothing to do after this, I'm sure they'll have football on up there too, so maybe your husband will be there.
Here we go. Sold.
So, anyway, hope people can attend.
You know, I think I just heard something that leads to a advertising byline, if you will, for our mask advisory, and that is Marion, mask up. I can see that. Maybe, where's Jill? She's not here. Perhaps we can have an illuminated banner across Seventh Avenue. I'd go for that. What I'm struck by, as we've talked about the storm response and recovery, the proceeding at the beginning of our meeting, the rescue efforts that our officers have did, the things that I know that our firefighters did, all of our first responders over this period. And then I think about the extra efforts all of you, staff members have made. I'm just kind of emotionally struck with the good that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll add my comments about the library. I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking coming up on the first. We should all be looking forward to that. If you didn't notice, last Wednesday, we moved the house off of that site. That was a really exciting process to watch, standing in the rain and, what's that, freezing, yeah, freezing in the rain. And that was kind of a fun, fun thing, and I think a lot of people enjoyed, we had a lot of spectators, and people enjoyed watching that, I think, across the region. Marion gained respect for making it the extra effort to save a little insignificant house like that. A lot of goodwill was earned through that, and so again, I want to thank the council and staff for supporting that project. We still have one more to move, they're working on. I did drive by the other one today and saw that they had the block built up under the house and are getting ready to move it off of the beams so that they can move back and prepare the other house. All the students who started school this week, wish them all the best. These are uncertain times, and it's, there's no easy answers, there's no right answers to anything, and just wish everyone, everyone the best. I just want to echo something that Grant talked about, which is the community's response in this to the disaster, the way we have, we all came together, just the unifying effect of that, of that event, and I hope that we can just keep that in mind, you know, it's so refreshing, it's so nice to see people put aside everything that divided us and all the differences for those couple of weeks where everybody was working diligently on just helping each other, and it didn't matter who anybody was, and people were just genuinely trying to help each other, whether they knew them or not. And I just hope that we can carry that forward as a community, we can really accomplish, show that we can accomplish when we all come together around a common goal. And, you know, I've said this for the last seven, eight years often, that, you know, we may not always agree on everything, we may have different ways, different ideas about how to get to the end goal, but we're all on the same team, and everyone, as long as we're all well-meaning, as long as we all are doing things for the right reasons, you know, I hope that we can just see, continue to see the best in each other, continue to see the positive, and focus on what brings us together and put aside things that divide us. On the mask issue, I would strongly urge everyone in our community to consider wearing a mask. When you wear a mask, it's to protect the other person, it's to protect other people, and we do, this is why we are a community, we have a responsibility to each other, and would urge everyone to just think about that, even if it means an inconvenience to us that we are protecting each other by putting on the masks, and we're making it so that everyone feels comfortable to get out and do business and do the things that we all love to do, and again, just protecting each other. So with that, thank you for sticking with us for this meeting, this long meeting, and we are going to entertain a motion for a closed session.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa.
Second. It's been moved in second to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa. Do we have the legal counsel's opinion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I have reviewed the subject matter of the motion to adjourn to closed session and do deem it to be appropriate to review it in closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, subparagraph 1, subparagraph C. Recommend that the council adjourn to closed session to consider it accordingly.
Okay, and any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abrahamsley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternad?
Yes.
Thank you, we're now adjourned to closed session.